There's no day. I stand in support of this law that we have an option to walk.
Yeah, like a weapon on it.
I'm booked after nineteen. Crazy busy with work.
Good evening. This is Mayor Tade. It's Wednesday, October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, uh, six thirty P. M. And they call the Attorney City Councilman in order. Deputy City Clerk, will you take a roll call, please?
Ellis.
Here.
Brancy.
Here.
Gaken.
Here.
Catchman.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Mackey. Morrison.
Here.
Carachini.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Shaw. D. Dor.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Shane.
Here.
Thank you.
Councilman Mackey called me earlier and said he they had some illness in the family.
We moved to excuse Councilmember Mackey, and I also heard from Councilmember Shaw asking him to be excused tonight, so. Second.
Motion made second. Excuse Councilmember Mackey, Councilmember Shaw. Are there any discussion? Do you none, all favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries. Everyone, please stand and join me in.
My pledge to nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
I move that we approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you.
Motion was made in second and to approve the agenda for tonight. Any discussion? Do you none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Security. Next item is public comments. All public comments, we try to limit to three minutes. Come up to the podium and give your name. Uh, ward number if you if you know it. All right, keep it to three minutes.
Hello. My name is Bill Stotter, and I'm the librarian. Actually, it's ward number one, but I'm librarian. Um, and I'm here as a board member representing the Museum. And I just, um, I put on the visitors' desk some handouts that you can look at after I'm done. But I would just like to kind of read an update on what we did, um, based on the four year anniversary of the museum at the South Down at the old Jason Tins or Salvation Army. And then, um, and I would like to take my glasses off and read it because Dr. Nickel was so decent bringing it together. Um, we actually formed a focus group, uh, and talked to several, um, community members, um, not and all organizations, um, to find out what they would like to have at the museum and what they liked from the old Armory Museum. And so, um, there's a lot of detail. There are some handouts that you can look at at your leisure. But I just want to give you what the summary is to give you an idea of what we would like to, um, use for. So the summary of the findings, the community value of the old museum has a venue to the wide variety of community advice for public and private. And it is only known by apparent that they would love to see the museum at its place to be able to serve the same role. There was agreement that their museum should tell the story of our area's past. The old museum had some nice exhibits permanent regard, but the new museum should tell the story in a more coherent guided way. So the museum visitors can experience the founding and development of downtown Aberdeen to the current day and beyond. The area's rich history needs to be told in more comprehensive in a more comprehensive way, including the timeline for the indigenous people, logging mills, international shipping, shipbuilding, the fishing industry, the music industry, and the birth of the range in Nirvana. And I'm sorry, this is in the same little phrase, but so forth, dillos and churches, um, famous people and the walk of the star. Exhibits needed to be wrote need to be rotated so the museum is not static and local residents have a reason to come back to see what is in there. So in conclusion, what is clear is that there are themes, uh, the community collectively shares from the New Aberdeen Museum of History. This, since the relocation was in the heart of downtown Aberdeen, it is clear it can play a larger role in community life and education. And the Aberdeen citizens place significant value on that role. The data from the community input will provide some guidance to city government planning boards and committees and organizations such as the Downtown Association as this work moves forward. It is the hope of the friends of museum that the community input provided from this community trends analysis will be beneficial in that regard. So thank you very much for the time and hope this is good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I saw what you did, heard what you did there, taking your glasses off so you could read that thanks to the doctor.
Yeah.
And who helped you guys focus.
Thank you.
That was a good one. Anyone else from the public wanted to do that? No one? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Tonight's consent agenda contains a minutes from the October eleventh, twenty twenty three meeting, um, as well as the accounts payable and payroll, and I move that we approve it. Second.
Motion was made in second and to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Do you none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries. Now we have a presentation by Tara Dunford on our supplemental budget.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
What's our video feed? Is it Teams or Zoom tonight, or what are we doing?
Well, we have Teams and we're just figuring it all out. This, uh, recording, we we tested, we found that we can record both audio and video. And this will be but on the city website by noon tomorrow roughly. Um, for anybody in the public to wants to view the the whole meeting. We we, um, are looking into being able to zoom, not zoom, to, uh, do a Teams web video, which we could put it live.
Thank you. Good to know.
Just a little bit of background. Um, for those of you who don't know Tara, Tara is our accounting consultant. After we've lost our finance director, we were lucky enough to find Tara. Tara has a stellar reputation with many cities throughout Washington State. She's helped many cities who have been without finance, or she's, um, an independent contractor, so we're very, very fortunate to have her. She's done an excellent job, um, putting this budget together and really cleaning up our financials, which is a result of having many, many turnovers in the finance director position. We're very fortunate to have Tara work with us and all the work, the hard work that she's put into this budget. We really appreciate it.
You're here.
See, see, um, so there's three voucher related items on the agenda for tonight. First three of the property tax ordinance for twenty twenty four.
Were you speaking directly into my?
Try it again, is that cool?
Nevermind.
I'll stand right here. And so first read of the property tax ordinance for twenty twenty four. And first read of the twenty twenty three supplemental, and then first read of the four preliminary budget. And I'll cover all of these things in one presentation, trying not to overwhelm you too much, and we're happy to do additional presentations at the November meetings as needed. So the property tax ordinance reflects the maximum allowable increase of one percent. Council does have the authority to authorize a lower amount. You can do zero percent, you want anything in between zero and one percent. Based on your general fund finances, I would highly recommend council authorize the one percent limit. It has a very minor impact on a per parcel or per home basis of roughly seven to eight dollars for the average home. And the ordinance, I realize, is a little confusing in the way it looks because it states you're getting a dollar increase of a hundred and thirty dollars and a percentage increase of zero. And in fact, you are getting the full one percent. It's due to the way that the calculations are done. So last year's actual levy included administrative refunds of about thirty four thousand dollars. That number is added into your actual levy for last year, but not included in the allowable increase. Um, long story short, the ordinance is written in the way that it has to be per state law, and you are getting an increase of close to two percent. One percent of it being the increase and another one percent being new construction and administrative refunds for twenty twenty four. On the supplemental budget, this is very small, sorry about that. And the twenty twenty three budget, I realize, is a little bit confusing in the way it was done. Beginning cash or beginning fund balance was included in resources and estimated ending cash and, um, uses of funds or expenditures were included in one authorized overall appropriation amount. And because of this, the ordinance amounts are different than the actual expenditure increases, so I provided this reconciliation to help you understand that. It's also shown on the detailed page where like indicating how by every line item what's changing. And these are mostly administrative changes and and minor cleanup that needs to happen before year end, so we don't go over budget in any fund. The most substantial increases are for police and fire cost of living adjustments. So those adjustments of ten percent for police and seven percent for fire were not included in the twenty twenty three budget due to the timing of contract negotiations and contract settlements. The general fund ending fund balance was actually increasing two hundred and five thousand dollars. Uh, this is due to the fact that the beginning fund balance, the actual is higher than budgeted, so we're able to use essentially unplanned or excess cash to cover the entire year general fund expenditure increases for twenty twenty three. So that is a little bit of good news. Moving on to a brief overview of the twenty twenty four budget, you obviously have the detailed preliminary budget book in your packet to cruise of your leisure. Uh, but I just want to give you some highlights tonight and go over the overall revenue and expenditure numbers by fund and then dive into the general fund in a little bit more detail. So at the summary level, I changed the format of this a little bit, and I recommend that the ordinance follow a similar format so that council can truly see the increase or decrease in fund balance or cash by fund. And with your expenditures and transfers out being the actual appropriations total rather than including ending fund balance. And with this presentation format in mind, I will direct you to the next of the last column where it says net increase or decrease. That's a really important one for me when I'm looking at fund level accounting. I want to understand whether our cash balance is increasing or decreasing during the year and and why. And the general fund again we'll talk about at the end. There are a couple of changes that I'd like to highlight. So the insurance reserve is reflecting a decrease of two hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty four. That's drawing down that balance to pay for police and fire pensions. And there is no revenue source in this fund. It's money the council set aside many years ago that we're using for pensions eventually. Those will go away, although it could be quite some time, and it it is a big expense for this department. And the EMS fund reflects a fairly significant decrease. This reflects a zero percent increase in EMS availability fees that is planned and discussed. There is a rate study going on currently, um, which will be incorporated in future budget. And while the decrease does appear significant, there is a huge amount of cash in this fund relative to expenditures. Uh, almost a full year's worth of expenditures are still sitting in this fund, so I'm not concerned at all about this one time decrease being budgeted in twenty twenty four. And especially given the fact that a rate study is in progress. And then Fund one thirty is reflecting a decrease as well. This is a transportation benefit district, um, and this reflects capital projects, I mean, capital project funds or resources that are restricted for capital are ones where it's not unusual to see big fluctuations up and down in the fund. That's just due to the nature of capital projects and the timing of when projects occur. And you might accumulate resources for several years and then spend on some one big project. Nothing unusual about that. And next slide, please. Uh, Fund three oh two had the decrease, um, which represents increased, um, big neighbor loans planned for twenty twenty four. See if all of the budget would be utilized in twenty twenty four, uh, future loan payments would start to build that fund back up. Uh, Fund three twenty, public facilities, has a decrease that represents carry forward of the police and fire capital projects, uh, which were approved and funded in twenty twenty three. Fund three fifty has a decrease due to the Charlie three rifle range capital project. Again, it's carry forward. It's already been approved. Uh, Fund four oh four, water, has a significant decrease due to big capital projects planned for twenty twenty four. On the revenue side, we have significant revenue increases in arterial streets due to grant funding, uh, and a decrease in museum. Uh, reflected from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, there was a grant received in twenty three for a capital project which will not be carried forward into twenty twenty four. And then, uh, next slide, I think that was the next one, sorry. And, um, in Fund three twenty, we're seeing a decrease in revenue. We transferred the full million dollars for police and fire in twenty twenty three, so we don't need that money in twenty twenty four. And Fund three ninety nine is the real estate excise tax. We are projecting a significant revenue decrease in that tax in twenty four. That's based on twenty twenty three actuals. So not surprisingly, given the economy, those those funds are just dropping on a little substantially, as we've tried to estimate revenues very conservatively in that. The sewer fund for three includes loan proceeds of eleven point five million dollars in twenty twenty four. Uh, six point eight was budgeted in twenty twenty three. None of it has been drawn yet. And Fund four oh five shows an increase due to one point seven million in grants included in the twenty twenty four budget. So I want you to spend a few minutes on the general fund in specific, you know, this is the primary operating fund of the city and has the low, um, constrained resources. And to be honest, the general fund does have some issues that I think council should be aware of and be focused on moving forward. So first we'll take a quick look at general fund revenues. I'm sorry, Becky, we should get on slide twelve. So this slide just shows the breakdown, uh, revenues by type for the general fund and then the changes over the past few years. Uh, projected actual revenues are expected to be one point five million dollars higher in twenty three versus the twenty twenty three budget. And that's great. That indicates good conservative budget budgeting, and that's what we want to see. We are budgeting revenues in twenty twenty four to be five point one million dollars higher than in twenty twenty three. We'll talk about that momentarily. And taxes make up over seventy percent of general fund revenues, and opportunities to increase these revenues are quite limited. The city's B and O tax is already at the legal maximum of point two percent. In fact, some of your tax rates are a little bit higher because they were grandfathered in, so there's no additional revenue to be had there. And sales tax and property tax pretty much is what it is. The city could increase utility taxes if council determined that that was appropriate. Utility taxes are currently at four point five percent. Um, electric and natural gas have a legal limit of six percent, and water, super and storm do not have a limit. So council could generate additional revenues by looking at utility taxes, and we see the ending fund balance of the general fund. And you'll realize why I'm throwing this out there for you to consider. Um, next slide, please. The, there's three big factors that get us to this five million dollar increase from the twenty twenty three budget to the twenty twenty four budget. So tax revenue is increasing approximately one point one million. This is primarily in sales tax. And this is not projecting an increase in sales tax over twenty twenty three actuals, but just projecting that twenty twenty three actuals will continue into twenty twenty four. Also reflects the roughly two percent that we plan to get, uh, in property tax increase. There's also an increase of approximately one point four million in grants and state shared revenues. This is largely due to a one time reimbursement that we'll be getting for the gateway project. Uh, so this is not ongoing revenue. It's purely one time. It's purely to cover expenses that have been paid out in past years. So again, when we talk about the deficit situation in the moment, keep in mind that this this revenue is included in that and is is very much a one time in nature. We're also increasing investment interest, approximately two point three million. This reflects the council action that was taken recently to credit all investment interest to the general fund. And then to move money that was sitting in a checking account, not leaking anything into the state local pool, which is paying over five percent. This is a huge move for the city and, um, it's only great thing to do for the general fund budget. So kudos to finance and city administrator for making that happen. On the expenditure side, um, you can see police and fire, not surprisingly, are your biggest expenditure drivers. The budget reflects a five percent concept of the adjustment for police and fire and four percent for other positions. This is per contract. And the twenty twenty four numbers also include an adjustment to twenty twenty three, which is not reflected in the twenty twenty three original budget. So we're seeing quite a substantial increase in those departmental budgets because it's really two years of concept of the adjustments rather than one. And then another significant across the board is a six point five percent increase in medical costs. There are also some one time projects in here. So in general government, we have insurance going up about a hundred and fifty thousand. That is not one time, but we also have two hundred thousand dollars in homeless shelter, uh, money budgeted, so that's something council can consider, whether that's an appropriate amount or you want more or less in there. But I would consider a one time expense rather than an ongoing one. So when we look at the overall budget picture, that tends to be a more allowable reason to have a deficit than simply to fund ongoing costs. And facilities budget is increasing almost seven hundred thousand, so two hundred and fifty thousand is currently in the budget for the Port Homeland project, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the elevator. And then we have salaries and benefits increasing in that fund over three hundred thousand. I know that sounds alarming. That's not any increase in FTE count. It reflects the work we did to better allocate public works time appropriately across funds and departments. And so it's not increasing overall salaries and benefits at all. It's just a correction of application and accounting methodology. And then police, the budget's going up one point one million dollars primarily due to two years where we call us, fire increasing six hundred and eighty thousand, um, about roughly half of that is salary benefits. Again, two years of colas and then three hundred fifty thousand for fire engine. The next slide shows transfers out of the general fund. I know that's something we don't always have a lot of visibility of, but just something for council to be aware of. The general fund subsidizes many other funds, library parks, streets, abatement, animal control, et cetera, are all subsidized heavily by the general fund. So when we're looking at the overall deficit for the general fund, keep in mind that these funds all have a direct tie in with that picture. So I want to show a brief overview of fund balance. I'm not sure if this can be zoomed in or not, but, um, I know it's quite small, but the twenty twenty three budget was adopted with a significant deficit of just under three point eight million. And actual deficit for this year is projected to be closer to two million due to revenues coming in higher than expected, which is great, but and twenty twenty two actuals were only favorable due to ARPA money. If you had received the one point nine million of ARPA, the deficit would have been about one point seven million in twenty twenty two as well. Uh, twenty twenty one looked pretty similar to twenty twenty two, so that the city has had this history of of spending more than you're bringing in in the general fund for several years. Your fund balance overall is still pretty healthy. Uh, but if you take out the armory money by the end of twenty twenty four, the ending fund balance will be about eighteen percent of general fund expenditures. Best practice would call for somewhere between fifteen and twenty five percent, depending on how conservative you are. So it's something that council needs to consider and take action on sooner rather than later, so you don't keep drawing down this fund balance, uh, too far. And there's a little snippet in here for the armory proceeds. There's about fifteen point six million dollars currently available in armory proceeds, uh, which approximately seven point five has been allocated by council, so eight point one million left for allocation. And I would be happy to answer questions on any of these items.
Anyone have any questions?
I had a question. Um, for the general fund, you were talking through expenses and stuff. Do you know approximately like what percent is due to, um, union contract expenses and cola and versus like what is, um, like facilities related and kind of the other side, like the non personnel side?
I can get those, I can get a breakdown of that for you. I don't have it up at the table now.
I figured you didn't. Yeah, okay.
I'll I'll put that together.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then is this deck available?
Yes, I can send it to Ruth and she can contribute that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just wanted to point out that the seven million dollars that he mentioned uh, out of the armory fund is then dedicated to the levy project. So just so you have to remember that. A very, very important project. Any other questions? See you none. Thank you, Tara.
Welcome.
For those of you council members who have questions, we wanted to do something similar to what we did last year, so if I want to be able to release like a FAQ to all of you, if you have questions and want to send them to me, I can compile them with answers and then get that back to you before the next meeting.
Okay. Mayor's report is next, and Mayor doesn't have one. Let's move. Council reports. Anyone on the council have a report? Go ahead.
Um, just two things tonight. Um, first of all, there should be an executive session on the agenda, but I don't think it's on the public one, so I make a motion to add. Oh, is it? I'm I'm supposed to get a a full copy then? It's on the agenda. Okay, never mind then. And then, um, second one is about, um, we have a regularly scheduled council meeting that's on November twenty second. And so we want to move that to November twenty first, so Wednesday to Tuesday. So I make a motion that we change our meeting to, um, November twenty first.
Second.
You motion was being seconded to move the council meeting on the twenty second to the twenty first because of Thanksgiving. Any discussions? Do you none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries. Any other council reports? Moving on to staff reports, city administrator.
I do not have a report today. We've been working very hard on the budget, um, and I hope that, um, all of you take a really close look at it and are able to provide any questions, um, coming out of the finance committee they discussed uh, meeting earlier, so we'll make sure to advertise for that, um, so that we can really dive deep into, um, in into into the budget. Uh, there are some things, items in there, as Tara had stated, that we included at when we did our workshop that were included in there. So um, I hope all of you can take some time and bring it back to the the next, um, the next time, the next reading and and provide me feedback. You know, the budget isn't final. And so, uh, we definitely, I I I felt like I understood what you were asking, what were your priorities were based on the discussions in the workshop as well as the vision, mission, and strategic goals that you set forth. So I hope that, um, this is reflective of that. And that the mayor, of course, and what the mayor wants to see reflected as well.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. I I should have said something in the mayor's report about that because, uh, I have to acknowledge all the staff in Tara, in Ruth, uh, for all the work that we've done this year on the budget. for all the work that we've done this year on the budget. We had quite a deficit to overcome. Expenses are going up and revenues are not, and so it's getting tougher and tougher. And we had quite a difference in the numbers this year. Actually, I believe the last balanced budget we had was about midway in the Bill Simpson's reign as mayor. And it's been a massive struggle and what happens, and I've said this before, once you get behind, boy, it's a chore to catch up. So what I want to say tonight is with all the work staff has been doing, helping in Ruth and Tara, we have found ways to streamline things and cut numbers or place numbers in an efficient process. And we just got probably as close to a balanced budget as we've had in a long, long time. And I just want to thank everybody for your hard work in doing that. Anything else from the directors? Any directors reports? Okay. Motion to request for council action. Finance committee chair report by council member Perachidi.
And we have public hearings. This is the date set for the public hearings on the 2023 supplemental budget. And so hoping that.
Moving to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing on the 2023 supplemental budget. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the supplemental budget? Please come to the podium. Seeing none?
I move the public hearing to be closed.
Second. Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, this is the date set for the public hearing on the 2024 taxable levy. I move that we open the hearings.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing on the 2024 taxable levy. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is open on the 2024 taxable levy. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Come to the podium, please. Seeing none?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
This is the date set for the public hearing on the preliminary 2024 budget. I move that we open the hearing.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to open the public hearing on the preliminary 2024 budget. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on the 2024 budget? Please come to the podium. Seeing none?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to close the public hearing on the 2024 budget. Any discussion? Under discussion?
I just want to make sure the draft budget, is it now on our website or will it be on the city website?
I believe it's on the city's website, yes.
Great. Great. Thank you.
It's included in the agenda.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Any none? All in favor, closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing is closed.
We have the first reading of Bill 23-14, an ordinance adopting a supplemental budget to change the 2023 appropriations and expenditures. I move that we adopt this report.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt the report on the supplemental budget. To approve the supplemental budget first reading. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm trying to read some of these so that we keep it all straight because there's a lot of different stuff here.
We have the first reading of Bill 23-15, an ordinance providing for the 2024 levy upon taxable property within the city of Aberdeen. I move that we adopt this reading.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve the first reading for the 2024 taxable property. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have the first reading of Bill 23-16, an ordinance adopting the preliminary 2024 budget. I move that we adopt this reading.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt the first reading of the 2024 budget. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's almost worth a big applause. Ah, that's great. This is probably close to the earliest we've ever got to this point.
Wait till two weeks from now.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to public safety. Chair report by council member Ross.
Thank you, mayor. Public safety event this evening at 6 o'clock and do not have anything on the agenda this evening. So I'll brief the report from each department. So from the police department, the activity report for calls in 2023 stands at 26,700. The police department has made 16 corrective arrests for possession of narcotics since the drug laws went into effect on August 15. The roof project is complete and they're waiting to make sure there aren't any leaks, that they're very happy to have that fixed. And they thank the council mayor for supporting renovations. The VIPs contributed over 192 and a half hours of volunteer time in the month of August. They are working with other public safety partners around the county to partner with lockbox program as we have 100 installed in Aberdeen and Hopecrim. The program is paid for by grants and we still have lockboxes available for those in need. The downtown Aberdeen trick or treat is Saturday from noon to 12, 12, I'm sorry, from noon to 2:00 PM. And they will be out in the city hall plaza giving out candy. And Saturday from 11:00 to 3:00 PM is the annual DEA Drug Takeback Event. Not to be confused with the trick or treats also occurring Saturday, because that allows for people to bring unwanted, unneeded, or expired medications to the station to drop off or dispose of. And the police department continues to work on additional personnel. They have five candidates for the three opening. And police officer Gabe Turnowski and police officer Jacob Shaw, both laterals, have successfully completed their probationary period this week. And background is starting on the record specialist position that recently opened up. So from the fire department, the American Red Cross smoke alarm sweep was very successful this year, was held on the dates of October 14th and October 21st. With the help of volunteers from the American Red Cross, the Aberdeen Police Explorers, the Aberdeen Police VIPs, Aberdeen Fire Department, and Hopecrim Fire Department, over 300 homes were contacted. 143 alarms were installed with 164 people being served. The SCBA washer that was purchased with funds awarded from the Washington State Illinois Fire Grant has been delivered and installed. And they're looking forward to putting that to good use, better deconnect, decontaminate the self-controlled breathing apparatus. The Aberdeen Fire Department has been awarded a $10,000 grant from State Farm Insurance, and this grant will go for the purchase of new fire extinguisher training. And the DNR Surplus Engine Program, the state DNR Surpluses Wildland firefighting engines to eligible fire departments. And the Aberdeen Fire Department has applied to receive one of 11 available vehicles. They have awarded this award to allow the fire department to be more efficient, mitigating grass and rod wildfires in the city. Not sit on public safety.
Thank you. Moving on to public works. Reporting on public works tonight. Go ahead there, sir.
Thank you, mayor. We met yesterday afternoon with a little bit of struggle. Technology was real kind to us, but.
Speaking in your mic, please.
Council member Shaw finally joined us via phone call. And we had a light agenda, which is that one thing, ordinance. This first reading of Bill 23-17, an ordinance authorizing the final adoption of an updated shoreline master program, adoption amendments to AMC 14.50, the shoreline master program. And the summary, a request, the Washington State Growth Management Act was amended to add the goals and policies of the Shoreline Management Act, the SMA, and to declare that the goals and policies of the shoreline master program be considered as an element of the comprehensive plan, and all other portions shall be considered development regulations. The SMA of 1971 requires local shoreline master programs to be updated to, one, give priorities to uses that require a shoreline location, promote public asset access and enjoyment opportunities, and three, protect the environmental resources of state shorelines. The Department of Ecology Guidelines codified in Chapter 173-26 of the Washington Administrative Code includes substantive procedural and process requirements to be followed by local jurisdictions and their comprehensive update to a shoreline master program, and require that the update to be based on scientific and technical information to assure no net loss of shoreline ecological functions. I move that we adopt this first reading.
Thank you. Motion was made seconded to adopt the first reading, in ordinance authorizing final adoption of an updated shoreline master program. Is there any discussion? Under discussion?
I have a few questions for Lisa Scott, if she could take the podium. Director Scott, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So my familiarity with the shoreline master program, I have not yet had an opportunity to skim through all this whole thing. I have read the whole thing, but but I am pretty familiar with it, especially in other jurisdictions. Are we also intending to abide by the provisions that anything along the waterfront needs to be a water dependent or a water-related type use?
Those are your first choices, but there is also third choices from that. They always go with water dependent first, then water related, then from there it can go down. You just have to be able to show that you have done an exhaustive search of surrounding properties, make sure there's not a better use for a non-water dependent or water-related property.
That helps. So if an opportunity came up to develop, say, apartments close to the river, along the river, right, would that that wouldn't necessarily be precluded?
Oh, no, that in fact, development in residential, even multiple families encouraged, that's where more of your shoreline access comes into play when you do more in multiple family type of development. And that is for by the shoreline master program, but most definitely that will be allowed.
And and most programs in other jurisdictions that I'm familiar with, property owners are required to provide for some type of a view corridor of the waterway. Is that also part of this plan?
No, that isn't, that's always necessarily required. We have different, it's with different topography here, so we're relatively flat. And getting view corridors is difficult since most of our waterfront is or was at one point built out. So your views come from mostly the public.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Does it speak to public access?
Yes.
Development?
Yes. Yeah, we encourage public access, not so much on residential, depending upon how that lays out. It'd be pretty almost impossible along the Wishka River in places. In port areas, heavy industrial areas, we do not encourage public access because of the activities that take place and the fact that it's not necessarily safe for the public. But the Ford Bridge Harbor, for instance, has the 28th Street boat launch where they have created a public access. So that kind of takes into balance the non-use versus the use.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anyone? Okay. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Any none? All in favor of the first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There'll be a second reading and a public hearing at the next meeting.
Mayor, I don't recall that there was a second.
No, I.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to special committee items. I have some appointments tonight to the 2023 Lodging Tax Committee, which will be meeting and reporting later this year. I'd like to appoint Lisa Blancher, Jackie Elsos, Danny Bacon, and Bobby McCracken to the 2023 Lodging Tax Committee. I would like confirmation from the council.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made seconded to approve, council member Francie is excusing himself.
Can can he not stay though? And just I'm staying?
He's good.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
Question. Is this for 2023 or is this 2024?
2023. They'll report.
They don't have much time left.
Well, this is this is the time they meet and they report about the end of the year. And going into the start of the year, all the money from this is designated.
Thank you. I hope to clarify that.
So just under discussion, council member Seedor, the committee is led by council chair Perachidi for Finance and director Barnum also helps kind of co-chair that. And then all of the organizations that are requesting grant funds do a very quick and brief presentation. And then the committee helps determine how to spend those funds and brings the recommendation to the council. And I believe the council is asked to recommend it as an entire package and not kick things out or add things to it.
Thank you.
So come to us before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. They deserve to be according to Lodging Tax Committee. Next item.
Next item is our first reading for Bill 23-18, which is an ordinance modifying the pro temp judge hourly rate. I move that we adopt the first reading.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to adopt this first reading of the pro temp judge hourly rate. Any discussion?
So this particular item was already approved for the pro temp judges' salaries for the 2023 budget, but it was not reflected in an ordinance. It had to be passed in an ordinance in order for it to be codified. So that's what we're doing here now. And then also there is the addition of the municipal court judge's salary to increase that by 5%. She's not received an increase since 2014. It's her appointment in 2014 also.
Okay. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The first reading has passed. Next item is back to the public. Next item is back to public commentance. Is there anyone from the public asking any comments? You none? Move on to good of the order, council members, under good of the order.
I'd like to give a shout out of thanks for a job well done to Chief Golding and the Aberdeen EMS team. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay. Okay, we have an executive session, so I move that we recess an executive session for ten minutes, right? Twenty?
Twenty.
For twenty minutes, action is not anticipated after that session. The purpose of it is to follow R C W forty-two dash thirty dash one one zero B, which is to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increase in price. It's a motion.
Second.
Motion was made seconded to recess for twenty minutes. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
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 You oppose? Motion carries. We will return about seven thirty-five.